Board into session. I want to thank all the folks in attendance, and I suspect we'll have a few board members, once they locate the parking lot, will be joining us in progress. Before we look at approving the agenda, I do need to add one item. There was an HR addendum that I believe you found located at your seat. So we'll add that to item 5C with our other HR action. And with that, I'd enter, take a motion for the approval of the agenda.
I move we approve the agenda with the additional HR addendum. Second?
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed signify by saying no. Motion carries. Nobody had signed up, and I think I know everybody in the audience. So we'll just go right into our staff reports, and I don't think FEA is with us today. So I'll turn it over to Dr. Gross to introduce our guest speaker.
Thank you very much. Tonight, what we have provided for you on the screen is an overview of our Native American program. Melody Stabner is here. She is our program coordinator. I've had the opportunity over the past many years to work with Melody as we've looked to build different services for the students that we have the opportunity to serve. And recently, Melody and I had the opportunity to travel to Belcourt to have a conversation about our program and making even a stronger connection with that community. So I think that was a good first step, and we're going to continue that as we progress through this school year. And with that, I just want to turn it over to Melody to give you an overview of what we've been doing in our Native American program this school year and what we'll be doing in the future.
Au revoir. Thank you for allowing me this time to come and share about my program. We have a lot of good things going on. We're kind of all over the place, and we do a variety of different services within the district. So, let's see. About five years ago, we were able to do some strategic planning for our program, and this was our purpose statement that the group had come up with. And it just says, "The Indian Education Program of Fargo and West Fargo Public Schools advocates for Native American student success in school while providing cultural opportunities, connections for students and families." So we take a look at our enrollment. We have about an average of 400 students per year, it seems like, in the Fargo schools and 300 in West Fargo. Oops. We were just looking at, I was just looking at the enrollment today, and I think we have about 413 is what I saw today for Fargo, but it just fluctuates a little bit. We have some mobility within our population. So we have about 24 tribes represented within the program. And I just listed three of our top tribes, 155 students from Turtle Mountain and 63 Spirit Lake and 50 from White Earth. And that's just what we know of with 506 form counts, and I'll share a little bit about that in a second. Okay, so we, in order for us to count our students for funding for the program, we have to collect 506 forms on each of our students, and that's for a federal grant. And the student, the parent, or the grandparent has to be enrolled within a tribe in order for us to count them. So I believe we have, within both school districts, we have about 600 forms collected. But we were only able to count, I think for this coming, this school year, I think it was 351. And so we're always working really hard at trying to collect enrollment numbers. That's something that's ongoing within our program. And, you know, with different situations that our families face, kids living with other relatives or just tribal enrollment numbers are getting lost, or they just don't have them. So we're trying to help them get that information from the tribes. This is some of the services that our program provides. We do mentoring for grades six through 12, and we do this in Fargo and in West Fargo. We have, we're going to have one full-time mentor in West Fargo this year, and I'll have one full-time mentor within our middle schools and high schools this year. And then there's two of us that do a lot of our elementary liaison work in helping support attendance and academic. And then we do a lot of cultural planning throughout the year as well. We do monthly activities, whether it's cultural or just bringing our Native American community together. When you're living in an urban setting, you can feel isolated, and we have families coming from many different tribes. So we try to bring everybody together so that way they have connections. And it's important for our families to stay in an area to feel connected to others, for them to have a little bit more mobility, or not more, stability, I should say, within an area. So we do a lot of referrals within the community, trying to help with, whether it's food baskets, housing, mental health as well. We also work with our connections within the Fargo schools, with mental health counselors, homeless liaisons. So we connect with a lot of people within our program as well. We bring a lot of cultural awareness into the community. These are some of our community partners: Native American Center, Native American Commission, YWCA, Rape and Abuse, Stepping Stones, Youth Works, Circle of Life Academy, and White Earth, the Homeless Coalition, Daughters of the Earth, Sacred Spirits, United Way of Cast Clay, First Link, and local colleges. We work with our local colleges. We've done field trips to the colleges and connected with the multicultural departments there. And Circle of Life Academy and White Earth, we've been able to bring our students out there. They have so many opportunities, and I'm taking a look at that for this year. We'd like to create a lot more cultural connections for our kids. I think it was two years ago, we did the Sugar Bush, so we did like the maple syruping out there, and they're going to be doing a lot more this year as well. They're going to be working off a different school year calendar. I believe it's 45 days on, 15 days off, and they're going to be doing a lot of cultural things during that 15 days off, and there might be opportunities for our kids to participate in some of that. I've done an Indian summer reading program every year. I've been in the program now. This is going on my 15th year, and I've been doing it for 14 years already, the Indian Summer Reading Program. And it's for pre-K through 5th grade, and it's just to encourage reading throughout the summer. So it's just kind of a big kickoff where we talk about other programs going on in the community, like Barnes &amp; Noble, Fargo Public Library. They have incentive reading programs. Then we do our own, but we just encourage reading, and we provide them with some books that they can take home and other incentives to make reading fun. And this year, we opened it up for all grades, K through, pre-K through 12, and the parents, and we just had a lot of fun activities going on, and the parents really enjoyed it. We had a lot of good feedback on that. We had 150 people come to that event, and on average, we have about 150 to anywhere to 250 at a lot of our events, so. This is our mentoring program. So we take referrals from school staff, parents, teachers, but we look at our most at-risk kids because resources are limited, so we're looking at the ones that are most at risk. So we're looking at attendance, grades, and behavioral in-school, out-of-school suspensions. So we're taking a look at all of that to identify our kids in grades six through 12. And then we just connect with our kids and encourage them and just provide support and look at goal-setting and turning in missing assignments and all of that stuff, so. We do a youth leadership every year, usually in March or April, and this is a couple pictures from our different events that we've had over the last couple, few years. And just want to teach them leadership skills, kind of discovering some of their strengths and things like that, and getting out of their comfort zones, and then also tying in cultural teachings and lessons into that. Let's see, so these are some of our events: Family Fun Night, Skate Land, Bowling, Indigenous Peoples' Day, Youth Leadership Day, Halloween Party, Winter Gathering, which is like our Christmas party, and then Graduation Picnic. Those are our big events, but that's not all of them. We throw in so many other things. This year, we want to do, working with our parent committee and others, they've suggested like some regalia making. So we might make like a traditional dress, or shawls, or things like that for, that way they could, these kids have their regalia they can wear at the powwows, or some of our local powwows, and... This is some information that we had from this, the year before this last one and this year, this last year. So 2015-16, we mentored 50 students, and then this past year, we mentored 51 in Fargo. West Fargo was 28 students in 2015-16, and 27 this past year. And that was just kind of an average, those numbers, 633. I looked at some of our sign-in sheets, and then you could see a big increase there, 2016-17. We've had school-wide access calling to our Native American families for the last couple of years in Fargo, and we've just got access to that in West Fargo, so that helped increase some of our attendance. So, like I said, about 150 at some of our events to 200, 250, so. And one thing that we have really exciting that's coming up is we have the North Dakota Native American Essential Understandings, and this is going to be available to teachers to tie in culture, like it's about our tribes in North Dakota, a lot of our teachings, sacred relatives, learning and storytelling, sharing and generosity, our sense of humor, tribal policies, native contributions. So it's going to tie in a lot of that, and I've been able to be a part of some of those planning meetings, and it's just exciting to see that this is now coming to where we can implement some of this. And the Fargo Public Schools has been behind us on this and supporting this effort, and I've been really excited about it. Tomorrow is our training, so August 9th, and we have teachers from almost every school building in Fargo that's going to be participating, a teacher from each building, and same with West Fargo. So it's great to see that both of our school districts are on board and supporting this effort, and I think it'll be just a positive thing moving forward. I think it'll, you know, we always hear that, you know, kids, it's important for them to hear relevant information that they're being taught, something that they can relate to in the classroom, and this will really help a lot of our Native American kids, and hopefully we'll see some positive outcomes with this as well, with attendance and graduation rates, so.
You have anything to add on that one, Bob?
I just think, as we look at this training, which again is tomorrow, and we are excited that we have, I believe it's 19 teachers from Fargo and about the same amount from West Fargo. When we asked, we asked for, at the elementary level, those who would be teaching the North Dakota Unit of Study, and that's typically 4th grade. At the middle school, we said, "Let's find a social studies teacher who then can make that connection," and then a US history teacher at the high school. So we have a good cross-section of our teachers. The idea is to have the training here in Fargo this school year for us to get better acquainted with the information, and then hopefully we'll do that again next year as we increase the number of teachers who have been exposed to this. Having a teacher from almost every building will help us with that, as they talk to their peers during professional learning community time to talk about what they learned and that that next group of people should sign up the next time that we offer it. So we are very excited that tomorrow, we will kick this off.
And Bob and I are going to get together too and come up with a plan of how we're just going to keep on growing the knowledge in the program as this year progresses, so. And we have a great parent committee that has, that supports, supports Indian education, and they've done fundraising, helped us at events, things like that, so. And as you can see, there's different tribes that are represented within the parent committee. Anybody have questions?
Thank you. Do each of those members of the parent committee have children currently enrolled in the schools?
Yes, yep. In order for the parents to be on the parent committee, they have to have a child within the school district. We do have a school representative, Trevor Gorno, who's from Turtle Mountain, but he is a teacher over at Carleton Ielson, and he's been on the parent committee for a little while. So we have a school representative, and we'll be looking for some student representatives this year, and also some community. That was a new thing with our Title VI grant, is that they wanted a community seat as well, so.
So I attended the session that was at Agassiz, right? And I can't remember what, I don't know what we titled that, but...
That was a public hearing.
Yeah, yeah, and there were a couple of those, weren't there?
Yeah, we had two of them.
Okay, so just as a board member and then attending as a result of serving on the Native American Commission, I appreciated being at that meeting, and I know you gathered, you were both writing, you know, feverishly, all kinds of ideas. It was kind of a brainstorming session, so I'm kind of curious if you could just share, one or both of you, some highlights from those, those sessions and kind of what the plan is to take some of that information and move it forward.
Well, I, I know that some of the things that they talked about was like some of the cultural components, so, you know, I'd like to meet with the commission and others within the community to see how we can better connect, especially with our colleges. I, I know I've made connections there, and I've done the field trips, but I think we could do better at connecting for services. So those are things that kind of stick out in my head, are just a lot of those connections that we make, that we need to make within the community.
And as I look at that opportunity, we have for the past few years done a parent meeting or an open forum for our consolidated application when it comes to Title I and Title II. We had wrapped all of those public forums into one meeting. This year, we separated the two, so we did a separate event for our Native American program. And I think the positive of that was it allowed us to have some deeper, richer, longer conversations about what we could or should be doing into the future. And like Melody said, I think most of the conversations that night centered around, how can we do a better job infusing that cultural awareness into our program? So I think that was a good first step, and now we'll continue with a series of additional meetings and continue that conversation.
It's, it's great to see the growth in participation in this and the increase in activities and everything. Do we have any sense that this is correlated with any improvement in achievement or growth or graduation rates or GED achievement?
I don't know how to address that one.
You know, I think as we look at this program, it's part of our multi-tier system of support. So a student might be receiving services here, but she or he also might be receiving services for reading intervention if that happens to be in our Read 180 classroom or in our Math 180 classroom. So it's somewhat difficult to say this is the one and only cause for that.
Sure.
But I think as a program, as we do our wraparound services, when it comes to having that mentor to make that connection, that relationship building that I think Melody and the mentors do a wonderful job of, I think it's the other interventions that we couldn't and do put in place, help in those areas. We, as we look at, for example, Read 180 or Math 180, and we say, are kids making that anticipated growth over the course of the school year? We can say yes, and that program is effective, but for us to say one program is the one piece, that's more difficult, but it's the combination of all those services.
Okay, thank you.
I agree.
In regard to working with the commission, I would suggest that perhaps both of you, Dr. Gross, also do a presentation at the Native American Commission, and maybe you've already thought about that, but we could work to put that on the agenda. I'm sure we'd be happy to have you as guests. Thank you.
Very informative and very, very much appreciated.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
And I just wanted to echo that same thing. I think as you saw the presentation and all of the things that we are providing for the students, not only here in Fargo, but because we are collaborative with the West Fargo School System, Melody and her staff are doing a fantastic job, so thank you so much.
That gets us to our consent agenda.
I move that we accept the consent agenda as written with the HR, additional HR addendum.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor of the consent agenda signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed signify by saying no. Motion carries. Brings us to item 6A, our liaison assignments. Governance met and had a discussion based upon feedback from each of the individual members. You might recall, we asked you to kind of give a brief report on the effectiveness of the liaison assignments you had last year. One of them came back with a recommendation that we probably discontinue being part of it because it's pretty much discontinued existing, at least at this point in time. So we have a recommendation from the governance committee to consider dropping the Early Childhood Coalition Board as a liaison assignment, not to be confused with the fact that if it does reactivate, we'll probably be re-engaged with them, but at this point in time, it does not appear they're a functioning organization.
I move that we, that the Early Childhood Coalition Board be removed from the board's liaison assignment listing. Second?
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Anne Marie, if you'd call the roll, please.
Ani?
Yes.
Benson?
Yes.
Boyd?
Yes.
Goldenberg?
Yes.
Knutson?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
Rowan Biker?
Yes.
Ulrich?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes. Motion carries. Brings us to our second business item, and before I actually entertain a motion, I want to talk a little bit about some thoughts I had as I was putting together committee assignments, and actually maybe even a step in front of committee assignments. Anne Marie had provided everybody with a listing of all of our building administrators should be in at your stations. Please remember to take the opportunity to send an email, make a phone call to your assigned buildings, introduce yourself as their liaison for the coming school year, and tell them you want to get involved. I would also recommend you ask them if they have it to give you the contact information for the PTA president as well, so you can at least let that person know that you are the assigned liaison to their building. As I look through the committee assignments, and, you know, first of all, thank you all for providing me with feedback and what you were interested in. I tried to as much as possible adhere to your desires, but I still had a need to balance this out and try to put the workload evenly out there. And I decided that really we need to foster leadership development throughout the board. So I took some liberty, which you could certainly override because this has to be approved by you, to put some new faces into some of these committee chair positions and vice chair positions in hopes that we can all just develop deeper leadership skills. I have two committees in particular that I want to at least pose a question, so when that committee gets together, you can choose to ignore it or maybe use it to really craft your mission going forward for the year. The first is our Government Affairs Committee. In the past, this is a very, very active committee during legislative years, and it kind of goes into hibernation in the off year. So I would encourage Jennifer and her committee to really look at, what should we be doing in the interim here? What should we be doing to stay on top of all the legislative studies that are going on? And what, if anything, could we do to foster deeper relationships with our area legislators? Might be two good focal points to really, you know, kick the tires on and see what we might be able to come up with there. For the Communication Committee, and Dinah, assuming you get put in as chair, I think this committee for a while has struggled with its mission for a variety of reasons. When it started and got created, we really didn't have a communications team at the district office here. So it had a much different role many years ago than it serves today. So I'd like to encourage that committee to really brainstorm about what would be a valuable mission and direction for that committee going forward. One set of thoughts I have, and that's all they are, we had had GAC committee working on putting together the occasional get-together with city, parks, and school district. To me, that really is more a community engagement piece that might belong more in that Communications Committee. And I'd also like to encourage you to think about, would there be positives, things that would be good for us as a board, for us to do a reach-out perhaps to the West Fargo School Board or the Morehead School Board, just in terms of seeing what issues they face that may be common to ours and what solutions we might be able to work on together? Obviously, our administrative team is working with all the school districts in the area, but, you know, I'm not so sure many of the Morehead School Board members could walk into this room and I'd even know they were on the Morehead School Board. I know more of the West Fargo ones because I at least see them in Bismarck occasionally, but just a thought, as, as you get your committees together and figure out what is really our game plan for this year. John, I've anointed you for the easiest job on the list, I'm sure. Depending upon what happens in the next few days, our negotiating committee may be activated really quick because it appears we may be headed to a one-year contract, although that's to be determined over the next couple of days. So that was my thought as I was putting these together and making the assignments, and I'd certainly entertain a motion to accept these committee recommendations. Linda?
I have a question first.
Sure.
If we are entering into negotiations again next year because we're on a one-year contract, it concerns me that you're an alternate on that committee instead of a full member.
Duly noted. It really didn't concern me at all. I'm sure I'll be pretty much immersed and involved there. And as John can testify, the alternate gets to sit at the table quite a bit during negotiations.
I move that we accept June, the president's recommendations for committee assignments for the 17-18 year. Second?
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Anne Marie, if you'd call the roll, please.
Benson?
Yes.
Boyd?
Yes.
Goldenberg?
Yes.
Knutson?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
Rowan Biker?
Yes.
Ulrich?
Yes.
Ani?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes. One thing to note for committee chairs, please reach out to the typical administrative person that works with your committee and begin to flush out when you might want your regular committee dates to be meeting. And I might note, you know, although some of the committees just about have to meet every month, sometimes more often than monthly, but there's nothing in our bylaws that say these committees have to meet every month. And, you know, you may, as a committee, decide, hey, why don't we meet three or four times a year unless something else comes up? So don't feel obligated to create a monthly meeting calendar unless, in fact, the workload is such that it dictates that you should. I think we've kind of fallen into a pattern of thinking we're supposed to have a committee meeting every month, and that is certainly going to be the case for governance. I can almost guarantee you, Kristy, it'll be the case for planning, but these other committees may well be able to function every other month or every three months, depending upon what you as a committee decide your goals and mission are going to be. And I want to thank you all for a grand to serve, even though I kind of put it on paper really without you agreeing, so. I appreciate it. That brings us to our board reports. I suspect we don't have a whole lot of these as we've been in summer mode, but I'll start with John.
Thank you. I was at the picnic. That was wonderful. Thank you, everybody. Thanks, my arm hair is mostly growing back, so, good times. And I volunteered for the United Way and helped them fill some backpacks and organize school supplies. I think if they, if they didn't, they got very close to their goal of 5,800 backpacks for area students, and they're aiming for 6,000 next year. So thank you very much to the United Way and to all the volunteers and all the area organizations that contribute to that, and to all of the employers that let their employees volunteer their time. That's it.
I as well attended the picnic, and I wanted to just say, great job to everybody involved, and I think we did a fantastic job of giving away all of our stuff to them, and I think they loved it. And that is about all I have.
Picnic, diddle, and that's it.
Jennifer?
Picnic, nothing more to add. Thank you for volunteering to cook.
Rebecca?
The Native American Commission met last Thursday, and thank you, Dr. Gross, for helping to provide the report tonight. That's it.
David?
I have been in contact with...
I have been in contact with the principal at Lucy and Clark and the principal at South High, and they, I've received their meeting announcement for PTA, so I think we're set up pretty well.
Dinah?
I got a private tour of the Ops Center, thank you, Jim Free, on Friday, because I was out of town when, when the opening was, so I was very impressed. So that was kind of fun to have a personal tour. And I was at the picnic. I've missed that the last three, two, three years, and so it was really fun to be there again, and I really enjoyed seeing the staff and the staff enjoying themselves, so.
Picnic, yes. Had a conversation with Troy Cody from Davies, so we're getting ready to meet soon. It's my new liaison school. And Community Development Committee at the city will meet on Thursday this week.
Well, I too want to thank everybody for their help on the picnic, from burning off all that stray hand hair to taking care of registration, to taking care of getting those door prizes. And mostly, I want to thank Anne Marie, because she picks the date. And as I duly noted, every one she's picked has been just about perfect weather. But she, and actually several other people from the DO, do a lot of work to make that picnic happen as well. So, big thank you to you, Anne Marie. Couple of things on the president's report, and please pay attention to the RSVPs. If you haven't done so already, let Anne Marie know if you're going to be at the opener, which is, I think, going to be at the Urban Plains Center again, right? Or Shields Arena, same place. Then let her know if you're going to be attending the North Dakota School Boards Conference and the law seminar. And we can register you for both or for just one of those two events, so let her know if both are on your agenda. We are going to have the State of the School Public Focus Group meetings at Discovery this year on November 2nd. And again, we're looking to know which board members will be in attendance. And finally, although it seems like a long way away, before you know it, we will actually be registering for the National School Board meeting, which is April 7th through 9th down in San Antonio. So look at your calendars and let Anne Marie know what your availabilities are going to be for those events. We've got two homework assignments. One is due for August 17th, the other is due for September 7th. So make sure when those come out, you're hopefully responding and getting those back to Anne Marie in short order. And that is it for the president's report, which gets us to item eight. Dinah?
I move that we move into executive session for the purpose of negotiation strategy as permitted under NDCC 44-04-19.1.
Sarah, second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, that we move into executive session for the purpose of negotiation strategy. Anne Marie, will you call the roll, please?
Boyd?
Yes.
Goldenberg?
Yes.
Knutson?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
Rowenbiker?
Yes.
Ulrich?
Yes.
Ani?
Yes.
Benson?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
That's the backfiring commission's rationale. One of the reasons why they say they suggest that we run a contract is because we have points of view trying to do so much about student safety. And I would give it a year to see how this is. And we need to stay. So. You know, you're in the position of the commission. We're looking at one year. If you want to try and add to what that. To your, to your contract. I'll just give you a few thoughts. First off, things in terms of what these students do in their city, we already have two students in our original salary. So I think that's what we don't put in there too. Quite frankly, our money's out. And all our foundation is just, we don't know exactly what the project that's going to be. It's pretty tough to ask you. I don't disagree at all, John, with you about that. One of the things that. The fact finding commission indicated was it gives us the time to get this in. And then we did it as a teaching association. The one issue I have with that, and that's why I think teachers, if they will accept the recommendations, they might want to leave it. They might be willing to do a two-year contract. They might. The reality is, we start negotiating with each other. It isn't like we're gonna have a full year of two-year contracts. We allow all of the work that Dr. Schatz and the entire staff, the team, to work on. They did. And so. Sorry, at least from my perspective, assuming they agree and we agree to the recommendations, I don't know why we wouldn't ask them. Do you take our year two salary offer? Make it a two-year contract? Because I don't think they necessarily are coming back to negotiate with us. And we will be negotiating three years in the future. For sure.
Remind me, in years past, has it been the teachers who have attempted on occasion to have a one-year contract instead of a two-year contract and went up under board preference to six months?
I don't really recall anybody really advocating heavily for a one-year contract with the exception of about five or six years. And it always did. Yeah, I think that is. And that was because there was some, there was real implicit data from D P I that we've plotted out many years ago. I think the F D A is now kind of where I D P I data. I would. The two-year thing is really a function of the state of the department. I suspect that's what. And obviously, it's so much fun. Everybody's watching the deal. More often than not, it's really hard to keep. So I'm sensing, correct me if I'm wrong, that if you're agreeable to whatever you decide, we're agreeable to a one-year contract. Governor Gossman, he goes for a two-year.
I, I would absolutely agree, um, not knowing how to conduct this. So if this becomes a sticking point, um, we're seeing the fact that.
No, we, we clearly would only go with a two-year contract, assuming we're going to agree to this. We'd only go with a two-year contract because. We do not want to be asserting that they did not accept that. Anything else on the one, important two-year contract? Um, obviously, number two, all the kinds of value we agreed to. So one of those got lost, right? So then, two years, ten years, four years. Number three was the teacher assignment. The teacher's schedule. The organization's schedule. The teacher's position. Some of them, they come together. Number five is motioning. Jim, actually, on that one, didn't, didn't their rationale at least consider moving some of their. Why does that? I was pushing to do that in a graduated policy. And our graduation, we thought, maybe something like that. I don't think that this is a priority of the top of the department. Okay. Next one was part of the five. One, the two-year. Last year, with the contract. I think they're just a lot like the national board. And again, depending on that, I think it will change. The people in front of you, they did indicate that, again, we might wanna think about, you know. Doing something that might help us with that. I'm struggling to figure out how we could help ourselves with all this. If the teacher leaves the classroom to go for an hour-long play, somebody's gotta be in that classroom with the students. So, anyway. I'm assuming we're kind of, we're figuring out what we can do. We're trying to make this call. Next one on the list is item five. They recommend that we add one week's schedule to twenty-three, to recall from, from the last week. Recall from two, to reinstated at the previous staff. Salary schedule with no loss to the seniority board. This, by way of background, um, if you read our reports to the mediation panel and our reports to the backfiring commission. We already said, this is from practice. We were okay to eradicate the putting this part in the contract. There was another piece of this, uh, driven by a seniority that this is. So, you know, this is what we're doing currently. I'm thinking we should do this. We didn't have the first one on August, my correct version, on May, so we're stuck here.
Correct.
Everybody's comfortable with that. Item search. This is, um, teachers require to have time and hours that they can teach the master in two years for what they call professional practice. Somehow different types of professional development. They're in terms. We countered their original proposal, offering to do basically what they wanted. But we kind of were hoping that we could get it played off. Take four hours at the last day of the two years, which is on the calendar of the professional development day. And you just. The commission has our recommendation. Made it there. Now, this is in passing, and then obviously, the board would be okay with this, since it is our proposal. That is the conversation that I have with Dr. Schatz. This might be a place where we can, given all of the fact that we're. Not force this language about the flex schedule in the last day. Now, keep in mind, if we take this language away, we still have the ability to define it as a flex day if we want to. Because that's purely, we're on the part of, we have two professional development days by definition, they're closed, we have many more. But, and I think, correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Schatz, after both, after eight weeks. I think our professional learning leadership team, this is not a goal we have to down on that. We'd rather work with, make this as huge a professional development course we can have as possible. About that.
I, I.
Right.
So what is the difference between professional practice and professional development?
There is one. They are using professional practice as a term, as we allow teachers classroom time on our professional development day. But they kind of want to create a whole new kind of day called professional practice. We're gonna still whisk them in the calendar, professional development days. They'll have four hours at the end of the semester, the summer development. And that, it really varies, you know, it's based on what. What we expect you guys to be doing. So it's like, uh, CD charts or whatever they need to do, that kind of stuff. Little difference, they don't have to school. We've got, uh, strong teacher patterns. So there really is something, called professional practice, that's what they're talking about. Yeah, dude, it was a term that teachers decided they had to put.
I'm okay with the all-inference, but I just wanted to clarify. None of this worries or anything to affect the current practice. In some buildings, um, having eight hours of flex days in a year, there was some, all this discussion involved in our other discussions, but that, that is probably table one year and a half, correct? That would be spread out over the course of the year, not all kind of one day, correct? So. That would be spread out over the course of the year, not all kind of one day, correct? So. Follow-up, so that, if we all look at. Um, if we don't put this as a contract, then it's still an option for, for building students. To come to here for those four hours. My understanding is that has to be distributed, happens there. That brings up the fact that they want to do whatever, but this would stop, uh, what we have to do that. There is still four hours.
So just to be very clear, what are we, what are we proposing? The language. The job, the salary. No, I think what we're asking is, do you, do you change the science of the board's liability, the school's being able to schedule for building change in the future profession development?
Oh.
And it will be irregular, all day.
Yeah.
Goodbye, John.
So what is the minimum? When you say minimum of eight hours, it's about the fact that, for example, does that mean that they can ask for a standard? I don't understand why the word minimum is there, but maybe I should. I need some more.
They can ask for more, they're not gonna get more. Well, first of all, none of them, why not open more than eight hours a day? But that was the language, the fact finding commission, then that's. You have another option here, is you could just say that we could drop this. And we could just go back to the fact that it's a kind of a place. Because I have a feeling that if you take the nine to twelve off, then it's not. Because the way they're reading it is that they can do that as well. So if you take that off, they're gonna go back to, oh, you tell them you're working all day, or, you know, I didn't need to, you know, the whole argument that you have to, they do not. So one of the all-inferences would be that, if they don't like the language adjusted as we want to adjust it. That we could just drop this item, so it's a fair practice. That's just to get up there. Question that, if that comes. Is that, or does dropping entirely fall under the small changes? Again, there's no definition of small change, but I would guess if the board and the teachers both indicate that we are happy with the contract. And that, um, the fact finding commission, that's. I don't think they're gonna do that. So what it would be, is that it's the fact that, in fact, it's just, uh. Now, we double. We double the two. And we're not having any difference, if the fact they can sell off the language, because. I, I. In, I don't think they're gonna like the flex schedule in the four hours, because if they didn't like it, you'd have to get on. If you adjusted to take the nine to twelve away, that makes two things that I don't like, so if this becomes a sticking point, that would be something I would do. If they say, well, if we can't agree to language, then let's just go back to what we agreed to.
This is the fact, this is the fact, I think, we need to, what, we need to, that last day. Where, um. Like, how this last day, because they were arguing about how some of their, their staff, so. They were using the staff to, to help us with things, yeah, yeah. So if, just to clarify, so we're all understand, if we say that we're not gonna put any time in the first day. Then we, again, turn to blind eyes, because school's doing different things with the last day, but we're also not guaranteeing their four hours that they asked for at, at each semester break. Um, can we do that in? But we don't put a minimum, Dr. Schatz, we don't put a minimum of eight hours or a minimum of four. I'm bothered by the word minimum. I'd like to just say what it's gonna be, eight or four.
Okay, let's be really careful for a minute. Although we haven't got, uh, the last two. I believe you and the board need to accept a hundred percent of these recommendations, and that's what we're sending the teachers to do. But, yep, we are one year free of the backfiring commission. The teachers may agree with that as well, at which time we can talk about teaching sometimes. If the teachers are not willing to accept these recommendations, there really isn't any tweaking to do. So, all of this conversation about, oh, let's leave this off completely. That can only happen after both parties have agreed to the recommendations that happen. Or we are gonna be in harm's way right along with the F D A, because, uh, the school board did not accept two of our recommendations. So I, I get the fact you don't like the word minimum, don't take this personally, we don't care right now. Because we have bigger fish that we're bound. And, and I get the fact that we'd like to do this all-inference, but again, I think we have to first have agreement. From both parties, that we have to go and accept recommendations. Then, we can talk about, if there is something we can do.
Right, yeah. Because I understand what the board wants, but we don't know what to, honestly.
I just wanted to make sure they understand that we probably have to start with the law, the negotiation. Although we still have that, yeah. So, I really don't want to. I think. Okay. Rights of teachers, that's the entire safety issue. Obviously, uh, the fact finding commission, they actually shared it, like, during the hearing. That they think we might be providing the polar types of districts across the state of what needs to be tried and whatnot. I think they also recognized that there is no silver bullet that's gonna solve everything. But good paid effort is certainly gonna add to our administrative system. So I'm assuming we're gonna be perfectly fine to curiam without this getting. And last is the salary schedule. Just so you understand, I believe the price paid at this, you got a calculator over there? I believe they're asking us to fund forty-nine dollars more per F T E, so forty-nine times nine seventy-five is our base line number. So that is the additional money for the backfiring commission. I know from having been with the board, this could not be a major, like, a pro-budget situation. I'm assuming, at least from my perspective, we could agree to that, but it would be less.
Absolutely, I would need to get that test. During the, the test, I need to test, just to know that this test is not going to be this long.
Jennifer.
Wasn't the recommendation that we, that we.
Yeah, certainly. No, I'm, I'm gonna just, I'll, I'll, I'd first find out if the board would agree to five hundred percent. Because again, kind of like David, to be authorized to go into this kind of, so the teachers, the board is gonna agree on to where all of the recommendations that happen. So, yeah. We have to find that. No. You are, the, the negotiating team is going to be doing this tomorrow morning. Because we don't know if they're going to, that's part of negotiation strategy, so we don't need to take action. You're not authorizing contracts that pass down on part of the union to happen to the students. So, are we all comfortable living with this recommendation? Then I'd like to throw out a thought, that is near and dear to my heart. In addition to the five hundred dollars per cell, which I think we have to do to be in good faith with the backfiring commission. I truly believe we need to honor lane changes, because most people liked their education more this last year. And I realize that comes at a price tag. It's gonna be someplace between two fifty and, I must say, three fifty. But it's been, every year it varies. Obviously, that would require us to deficit spend to do that. And then Brock and our budget development team and finding committee, is gonna have to figure out where to go find that three hundred and fifty thousand. So we can replenish it year after year after year in teacher budgets. But I just think we, I think we can afford that much of a deficit. Knowing we have some places we can recover in time in short order. And I believe it's keeping faith with people that were doing the work last year, hundred percent standing they wouldn't. I throw that out there as a, as a.
Two hundred and fifty to three hundred and fifty thousand, is that one year or two years? Are we talking two years or is it a two-year contract?
No, that, that's what we'd expect we'd be paying out this coming year for people that had, had done lane changes. I'm not suggesting we're talking about honoring lane changes if we go to a two-year contract, that might be something we could explore. And that's why I say it forces Brock and his budget team to then go find three hundred and seventy thousand of savings elsewhere. Which can happen a number of different ways, employee turnover, uh, if we lose somebody at a high salary range, if we don't always replace them at the highest range. There may be the ability to shift lease payments out of the general fund, put them into the building fund. At the end of the day, I have faith that if we wanted to do this, Brock will go find a way to balance the budget for the second year. Because once we do that, that's three hundred and fifty thousand every year that those same people will be receiving. As well now being a new square, like, that would have to go to the other side. And that square will move up as whatever level of teacher salary we can get.
So it seems that we would need to make it to the minimum now, that we would need to make it clear that it does include, uh, the following year as well? Or we would be disrespected by the entire teachers. And that's the question, if they don't think they can get a lane change.
That's a whole different animal, I'm not saying I'm against that idea either. But, and keep in mind, we actually have lane changes in year two, it just changes how much money we could put into itself. So, yeah, I mean, we could tell them, our, our intention, if we go to a two-year contract, is to honor lane changes for next year. But it's gonna change now on how much we're gonna have to pay out. And increases. But if you do.
You know, because I think that that could make a difference in certain, what is that, so I, I always want to do that. Of course, it's.
I don't know if it's what it's worth, I always just see it on the now, a lot of projects.
Exactly.
I, I actually think they need to tell us whether they're willing to accept these recommendations, that they're, they're doing anything to. Um, I, I actually think they need to tell us whether they're willing to accept these recommendations, that they need to do anything to. And, and, you know, they may say, well, we're, we're sort of comfortable, uh, what, what about that, you know? And maybe they're listening to that, but I don't think we do anything. If, if collectively we're okay theoretically offering lane changes within the five hundred dollars. Um, we could do that unilaterally, they don't necessarily have to agree with these recommendations, we can agree to them, we can empty money, we can add lane changes too. Um, so, if philosophically we as a board are comfortable with this idea, it's one way or another, I think lane change is gonna happen. Either we'll be in agreement with them, notify backliners of that, or they will have rejected the backliners' recommendations, we will have accepted it. And then we're gonna unilaterally issue a contract, at which time, I don't know how many teachers would be eligible for a lane change? But when that happens and they realize that the board is honoring their lane change, even though it wasn't required of us? We might have some people that actually like the school board for a change, maybe, it's possible, for a moment anyway. So, I, I think strategy wise, that's the only way we can do it, unless you come up with something different. And just one thing, and I like, I, I agree, if, if, if we can afford five hundred dollars. If they don't accept it, we are going to do that, if, if we, if we're in a discussion, say, that, 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 then we can start by offering that, which is what we're gonna do. Hence the reason we need to bring this down before we show. Jennifer. I think we all, us as a team, I, I, I mean, we are the board, they are our employees, uh, I think we need to leave here, in my perspective. And, you know, there's nothing in these recommendations that raise any concerns for our administrative team, I don't think there's anything in here that raises great concerns for us as board members. Now, I'm actually thinking the fact finding commission read what we put on paper in the center room and said, yeah, this district doesn't have a lot of money to stand on to do this. Looked at these other issues and said, yeah, no, I, we think boards offer this reason. So, do I have consensus that everybody is comfortable if we end up giving them very much to have lane changes?
There has been some, sometimes I've seen that, but then it's bad, but, um, it's saying it has to be some place, but sometimes it's, it's not. How, how we would offer it, I would say not how we would offer it, but why do they see zero, and we have.
So, remember, the offer the board had, David, you were in the equation about five hundred and fifty thousand dollars, but the fact finding commission saw that, and said, hey, you're offered. They, they, contrary to what teachers told us, fact finding commission didn't say you're offered, they said, you're offered five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Which includes lane changes and small amounts of offers, because you recall from the hearing, one of them talked a lot about across the board. They liked that, they liked that, they talked about how it's a lot across the board, that it's happening, others, fact finding commission, so I think what they said was, you're already offering five fifty four. Let's just sum that up to five hundred dollars per cell, we think that works, and it's a five, and it was close to that, so I think that's all we did. Remember, they were asking him directly, I think it's not that impossible, but I think they just put ours down, they, 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 for everybody. I don't wanna, that's my assumption, like. Yep.
Yeah, I, I, I think there, as I sensed it, they were uncomfortable with so many teachers feeling, which is, being, being, it was just a little bit. And only people seeing measurable improvements, I think that's just the, the sense of equity that, that keeps it going. Um, I can't imagine they would be concerned with us, to be, um, to be, to be, to find a way to, to, to deal with it. And I am recalling that one of the things we did was, uh, you know, budget, I'm assuming the same, is that we have offer layers that two-year fact finding. I mean, or, but, but consultants are coming in and really good teams, and show us really good, I mean, they guarantee that we'll at least give our money back. But I can't hope to think that they'll, they'll find us some, uh, deficient things as well, so I'm not too, I mean, if these guys aren't like in some sort of screaming panic right now, I think we're good.
I just wanna make sure, um, and, and I, I get the fact that you guys, uh, truly have an in-depth discussion on where we're, we find this extra money. And, and I wanna be really clear, we're gonna find it right out of the fund account, it's right now, we've already done a preliminary budget review. So, we're really talking a year from now where we're gonna find it, and I'm telling you that we really can't go down that road in this session. That would be worse for the planning committee and Brock and the budget team as well. Okay, so, I'm sensing everybody's okay if we end up giving agreement, uh, add in lane changes, possibly talking about something on this professional development time. It's like a different thing to what we do, any other thoughts? I'm sure, especially if you're, if you're, if you're, but the agreement has to come first, before there's any thought about the changes or, or anything else for, like, what we're gonna do. So, that, I, I just, I'm sitting here thinking about that strategy, they're not gonna understand. So, if you're first out there, I think you need to have that conversation, try to get them to understand what that is, because they won't understand. They're gonna think that they can't handle negotiations, or, I'll guarantee that. Yeah, um, I'm very concerned about the candidates that have left on the table tomorrow, when this is done, because I gotta open the door. And it's immediately that, it's really bad, Facebook is ablaze, uh, or CNN is hearing that, so, however, this whole thing is expanded, so, you just suggest that you guys know what you, what you're supposed to do. That we are very careful with our words, very measured, there's no kind of side comments, or, or the comments, or, that just, they could take a lump, since they've been doing it. So, roll that into the board, do the, so, I'm excited, I'm excited about it.
I'm just testing, so, uh, I'm not sure we need to address, so, assuming both parties are ready to, to, to have, uh, what do we do about the second year? Is that, do we have something that we, do we offer what we, our second year was, and add in, do we want it? And is not, is do we have it, that's our, is there a rule that for both, okay, is we want to, is we, is we, okay? Right, okay, but I just wanna be clear that we all understand that that, that is also a, as David has it is, uh, you know, thank you very much, and we appreciate, you know, you laid on this, this humor in the beginning today. Um, you know, the board has discussed this area, this, this, uh, uh, the, uh, fact finding, you know, that, you know, that at least, you know, give that good sense. So, then if they respond to your concern about extra line, just, just to clarify, do you feel that, um, what you were trying to say was that David needs to explain what Jim has here? That your role is that we have to accept all of this past year, and therefore the board is review it all of the year? Is, is that what you wanted to clarify? Because I just wanna be clear what you're.
Well, I'm just suggesting that there is no game, there is no rules, David.
Right.
It's left for you to meet one more time, to see if you can find, and agree upon, the contract, other than that, it's up to what I'm even gonna do. So, I don't think that, my assumption is they're not thinking that either. That they're, they're, accepted and then they're, I don't think they'll, they'll think that, they think they're coming in, they're gonna say, well, we wanted to go to this side or this side, and they're like, they, they, they don't have a win in being one of the stuff that they're doing. And they're gonna look for win, because if I'm on the negotiating team, that's a dead in the book, I gotta go back to my people and tell them, I didn't get to win this, a couple of several times. So, that's what they're gonna come in and try to, that's my assumption, and so I just think that, I like kinda how you decided off, I say, you know, we would appreciate some work that was done up to this point. At this point, the board is in favor of the recommendations that they hold with the F S committee, and at this time, you just put that on the table, and engage in the discussion with the board, and then see what they do. And then if they go wayward, then try to agree with him, but I'm just very concerned that they won't think that either, I just don't think they're, I'm just saying, really, that's it. Sure, and I think, you know, if what you have to say, I think we concentrate on those worst minor changes. And to me, it's not a minor change if we go back to, you know, if these, uh, items, these relationships, these work, essentially, we, we have an option of accepting part of that. And then after that, if they're, if they also accept the, they, 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 because then we've met the, the rule of the fact finding commission, they, you know, they will be in the papers if the board has approved or accepted. Uh, now, one thought, and I, I don't disagree, I, I, especially based upon the conversation, I've heard about one other path in the last couple of days. I mean, the teachers clearly are thinking there's still time to do some watching, but I'm hopeful, and I always get this wrong, they used to be in a sort of, like, a, 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 a. But while the F D A is not very experienced with fact finding commission, North Dakota United should be, um, there is, it just, every year they'll go through this stuff. So, they should hopefully be getting some kind of direction from the apparent organization here on, here's the process, that's, that's, and just so you're all aware of that, we're on the clock. I believe I have to communicate back to Chairman Rummel, no later than the close of business on August fourteenth. Uh, that either we agreed and they agreed, we agreed, they didn't, or they agreed and we didn't, and inform him what happened. Then, regardless of, you know, unless we've got an agreement, then they have a clock that ticks off. And, you know, I, I, I'm hopeful the F D A is aware of the fact that if we've accepted the recommendations and we don't have an agreement with the teachers, it's gonna be pretty hard for the article they put in to blame the school board for this, you know, because maybe on record having agreed to this. And I don't think the F D A wants to be the bad person in this case, so, I am hopeful if we, if we all understand this time frame and what happened. That maybe the F D A is gonna realize, okay, like, at this point, we're, we don't like any of this, but, we don't wanna be the bad people in this case either. At which time, we have an agreement to this contract that's defined by this recommendation panel, um, and then we can talk about, would you be interested in a two-year contract? Would you be interested in how long enough to have lane changes in, for this last year? Do people open, even though there's no promise going forward, that future lane change is gonna happen, because we're on a one-year contract. But at least honor it, because those that did it. So, I'm kinda hopeful, I, I, I know totally well that we got a low morale right now, at least with this segment of our teaching staff. I mean, when they start putting things like, well, you know, I won't be back in my classroom next year, we'll find out. Certainly, maybe hiring thirty more, more teachers than we knew we needed, but I will address that issue if it comes up. I, I have serious doubts if anybody's going to make such a strong stand if they're gonna choose to give up their job right now, unless they've already got another one. In which case, they probably should notify us on the go, so. It, it's definitely got no rules to it, outside of that, as they gave it coming down. We either agree to the recommendations and then we can tweak them, or we don't have an agreement, and then we notify the fact finding commission, we all agree. And we can unilaterally issue whatever version of the contract we have on August fifteenth, so. Jennifer. Question. Question, uh, do you think that if the state, if we give the board the second year, would they, uh, uh, do, uh, That's that's actually more than our offer. Our offer was slightly over five hundred dollars, like five hundred and fifteen in year two, I believe. Someplace in that range. So, so, no, I'm flat, I'm flat on, yeah, I understand, and we have two seventy plus one. Yeah, yeah, one ninety plus one, or five seventy plus one. So, waiting to drop. I I I got the math. He is the, I think, I think that was the. Well, that was the only person I had from our discussion, but maybe I already mentioned what we were going to do. I mean, if we end up with a two year agreement, that we're going to honor lane change, but we've got to sign it up in year two as well. So that's, and so, yeah, we'll probably say five hundred in year two and lane change in year two as well. Which is actually more than we have, uh, with our, with our, but again, I think that we need to do a number of.
I I my only concern, and I agree with that, is that that's our offer, and I feel that it's more than, um, you guys brought to the table for either year, I mean, two the lanes. It's just concerning to me when I think about, if the method's right, we've been saying we couldn't do it, and now we can, and now we're going to do it for two years, and we can just make this happen. So will it be very clear that we're deficit spending, or we're going to stop? I mean, I, that's my only concern as a teacher, that's what I would be thinking. Boy, you told me you could only do this, but now you're going to offer this, and you're going to do it for two years? And and I want to do lane changes, don't get me wrong, that is, I have people knocking down my door, I probably have fifty waiting to be approved. So that would be my desire, that we approve them, I just, I worry about that perception.
And just to be clear, we will be telling them we're going to use fund balance to fund it the first year. We're not going to use fund balance the second year. But we're going to direct our budget development team to figure out how to make that possible in year two. So, bringing, bringing, bringing back to the way the board should, yes, as soon as we've seen, they've seen, so there was, you know, a lot of, we very likely, as we're, we're, we're. Teacher, and that's, we need that, everything, we need to provide. Our first, we have to, we have to, but Jim, I want to ask you, if we can give them five hundred dollars and sell, plus the eight years, can that be another contract? Sixty, seventy. That's the offer. Yeah, that is correct. I do need that. Yes, you are correct. And that's why the budget team has more to do. But it's work, I think, that we need to figure out the situation. John, not to cause any, uh, memo that we're going to send. Yeah, we're we're going to actually have the current negotiating team, because you have an actually called your committee to post session. I just want to be very clear on what this is, and I don't want them, I don't, I don't want anybody to be too hard on us. Now, I don't need to be, you know, finish this, and maybe start new session, and then you get to. Okay. Any other food to thought? There's been one, David, you just throw a bunch of them up. I'm already there. Obviously, you're all welcome to join us here at nine o'clock if you can find a place in the open. Park over in, um, Park Cycles, or Great Northern Cycles in Lockwood. We are officially leaving this scheduled session at seven oh two.
I'd like to call this meeting of the Fargo School Board back into session. Uh, I want to thank you all for your input and the opportunity to hopefully, uh, end up with a negotiated agreement with our teachers tomorrow. So best of luck to our negotiating team. Our next regular meeting is scheduled for August twenty second, but as I indicated earlier, we have a special board meeting for the purpose of approval of our teacher contract on August fifteenth, and that'll be at seven thirty in this room. Uh, for those of you wondering, it is a single item agenda. Um, and assuming we don't have a whole lot of controversy between us, my guess is you should be able to attend that meeting and get to wherever you want by eight o'clock that morning. So I'm going to guess we'll be in and out of here in about ten minutes, assuming we start on time.
Assuming the parking lot's done.
Even if it isn't, we will be. And with that, we are officially adjourned.